All right. Good evening and welcome. This is the October sixth, twenty twenty five meeting of the school committee called a meeting toward five twenty. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey, I asked for a little call Heather Pete Star.
Heather Brown, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
And I'm open layer Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Anton Alarjon.
Gregory Thompson.
Amy Delanta.
William Schruth.
Carrie Josavsky, Caitlin Card.
Well, thank you all. Okay, we have minutes for approval and entertain someone to move on the roots.
Motion to approve the September twenty second, twenty twenty five regular sessions.
So made by Amy, second by William, discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed aye, that carries five to zero. Thank you Samantha. Committee and some community communications, Anton Alarjon.
I have nothing right now.
Okay, Amy.
Um, I would just like to share that I had my walkthrough at Porchland Park. Um, I was able to sit with Principal Pearson. Speak with the people, people, they seem to be off to an excellent start this year. Unfortunately, my visit got cut a little short by a fire drill. But um, overall, it seems like they're off to a wonderful start and it was a great visit.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. William.
Nothing, Joe.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Hey, look. Nothing tonight. Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you all. Uh, right now we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none tonight, we will continue on. Uh, five point one point one superintendent's report. We have a discussion with retired superintendent Paul Gabrie Ducci. Good evening, sir. Thank you for joining us tonight.
It's first time I've had a tie on about four months.
It's looking good. You remembered how to tie it. That's good.
No, my wife said, where are ties? She said, what do you think? So uh, uh, about two months ago, I sent Greg a letter, um, email just saying that I know that you're gonna be looking for a superintendent and if I could be of any help in any way, um, and I specifically said, I'm not looking for a job. Um, just give me a buzz and I'll, I'll meet with anybody. And so here I am tonight. So um, thanks for having me. Um, so a little bit, little bit about my background. So I'm a retired school superintendent. I've been a superintendent in Massachusetts and in Connecticut. Uh, two districts in Connecticut and I retired from uh, Hampton, Wobraham, Minutetown Regional in two thousand and nine. Uh, since that time, I've done a lot of different things. And one of the things I did, or I have done, and still do, I'm still on their website, um. I am an executive search consultant for the Connecticut Boards of Education. Which is similar to the Mass Association of School Committees. By the way, you know that Massachusetts is the only place that calls you people's school committees, right?
Yeah.
Everybody else in the country is school boards. Um, so um, so I've done about over the years, uh, since I retired, about fifteen searches uh, for school districts in Connecticut, uh, either by myself or um, with uh, one of, one of the other consultants, um. Um, and um, what I think at least from our perspective, the other consultant, main consultant is uh, there's one other superintendent, but the other main consultant who does most of the searches is a former school board member like yourselves. Um, she actually was president of the National School Boards Association. Uh, Mary Broderick, her name is. Um, so, but what I think that in terms of us being a pair that work together, she brings a school board perspective and I bring a superintendent's perspective. So tonight, if you, I don't really have anything prepared, um, other than to respond to any questions and maybe give you some suggestions. Uh, is it Amy? So at the last meeting I saw on LCAP, Amy made a statement that is extremely important is that by statute, one of the most important things that you people do is hire a school superintendent. That's clearly one of the things that stands right out in the statute. Um, a little different from what you people are preparing, and I'm not saying it's wrong. Please don't get me to think that I'm saying that. But in Connecticut, we don't use uh uh, large groups of non uh, school board members as the search committee. Um, and the reason why that is because there were some issues of confidentiality. So I would tell you that when you bring this committee together, it's extremely important that they know that they cannot discuss any of the candidates outside of the meeting. There were some problems in Connecticut where uh, some people on a committee, they knew that there was a relative who lived in a town where the candidate came from and they started making phone calls and what's the person like and all of that. And that person, uh, happened a couple of times, the superintendent had not informed their board that they were looking. And there were some problems that occurred because of that for the candidates. Um, and I'm not sure that there was a lawsuit, but there was threat of a lawsuit. So I just wanna tell you that make sure that that group knows uh, that they have that confidentiality is a major, major issue. In fact, we even have school board members sign a letter saying that they will not discuss any of the candidates. Uh, so it's like a confidential, it's not really legal, but we do it anyways, uh, just to hit the, hit home the fact that confidentiality is very, very important. Um, so I have a couple of things about, um. So from my perspective as a superintendent, you um, need to know that there will be some people who will apply, who will be applying, who may not want their current school boards or school committees to know that they're applying. And that plays into that confidentiality issue as well as when you get toward the end of your search process. And so if you were to say to me, Paul, uh, we really like you, we like what you had to say. You're one of three finalists and we'd like to come visit your district. I might be a little hesitant to say, I'm not sure I like the prospect of being one out of three. If you told me I was one out of two, I would feel more comfortable. So I just want you to know that from a superintendent's perspective, that whole thing is very, very important. Um, and again, that superintendent, if they do reach the finalist level, it's up to them to tell their board, their board or board chair or school committee chair that they are being considered uh, by East Long Meadow. And if they don't, then that's their problem. But I just wanna let you know that I know that I heard Greg at the last meeting talk about when they were gonna visit. And to me, the visit really comes at the very, very end. And um, so at by that time, if a person is that far along in the process, they should have uh, informed their board that they are being considered. So when I was in Summers, Connecticut, it's just over the border and I applied to Hampton, Wobraham. I was one of two and that's when I told the board that a serious candidate were leaving. By the way, um, I should mention that you are extremely fortunate. And it's unique that you've had a superintendent stay as long as Gordon has. That's I was fourteen years in Connecticut. He's got me beat by two. So, and I thought I was setting record. So that's it's, you've been somewhat spoiled that you've had the same person. And uh, it doesn't always happen. So it just doesn't always happen that someone is gonna stay that, that long.
It's more like four or five years typically, right? Four, five, four, five, six years.
I would say that you, uh, so I did eight or nine, eight and a half, nine years and, and uh, uh, Hampton, Wobraham, I did seven and the, I went to, uh, was a part-time superintendent. I did seven years there. So anything over five is pretty much out of the three to, three would be on the short side, five would be really what you're but if things are going well and the person's happy and you're happy and things are moving along, that you never know how long. Uh, there's a lot of issues that obviously could, could happen. Super, uh, superintendent is selected by a school board and in three years, that person may be looking at five different new people. And all of a sudden, that person's saying, I don't have the rapport that I had before. So you never know what, what, what it's gonna be. Um, one of the other things I just wanted to mention, and then I'll just say if you have any other questions, I won't take anymore of your team, um. Couple of things actually. I'll start from the bottom of this. Take your time. Don't rush. It's that important. And don't think you have to set, if you have some candidate, if you come to your final group and you still are not that happy, you don't have to make that final decision. You can stop, you can find someone to fill in and you can go out and re-advertise it. So just make sure that you feel like, oh, we've put all this work in and where's, I still are, maybe you're not comfortable. Take your time and don't, you don't have to settle. Um, what's important though is that you people as a school or a school committee, that you see enough of your candidates, that you have spent enough time asking questions and getting to know that person really, really well. And so what, what is the true, what is the standard now in Connecticut is the school board names themselves as the search committee. And that allows them to meet as a search committee in a fully open meeting. Because they're no, they, when they meet as a search committee, they're not a school committee. They're a search committee. So that it's how the Connecticut open meeting laws work. Uh, but that allows them to see everyone from, let's say you get fifteen applications. So what we do is we bring all fifteen applications to the school committee or school board. And they get to see everyone who applied. And our practice is that we have, we use a traffic light. A red light would mean we have some real concerns about that candidate. Yellow light would mean we think the candidate's okay, but what do you think? Green light would mean this person should probably get an interview. Not that we're making the selection, it's just that this person should get an interview for sure. And that's based upon us having vet the candidates and us, you know, search consulting, having interviewed the candidates ourselves before we send them to you, uh, sent to the school board. So
You would go through all the fifteen candidates before the school?
We will get on and do a Zoom with all fifteen candidates.
Yep.
And we'll spend maybe a fifteen to twenty minute interview on Zoom just to get a sense of their personality, why they're applying, is there any issues that we need to know about? And if we pick something up in a uh, person's uh, paperwork, like for example, oh, you only spent two years at this place, what, what was the reason for that, you know? And we do that before we send uh, anyone to a search committee. So that, so we, in a sense, do the vetting that way. And we do try to do vetting as best we can. You probably already know the news about the gentleman in Iowa. Um, familiar with that, that situation. Um, somebody didn't vet that person or, well, somebody made a mistake. So that, that happened, that happened. Um, the last thing I wanna say is that when you're developing questions, and I'm sure the consultant will give you a list of questions that you should have. We like to also try to put in some what I call out of the box questions, simply thought. Where did you go on your last vacation? You know, just to sort of get to know the person more than um, the technical kind of side of things. Because everybody you meet is going to pretty much respond to the technical questions the same way. So we like to try to ask the school committee or school boards to get to know the person a little different. It also can, it has serves two things. It gives, gives a little insight into the person as an individual. And then it also sort of make, every time we've asked a question like, where did you go on your last vacation or you had a chance to go on a to golf or cook at home, which one would you do or something, some crazy kind of question. Sort of catches the candidate off guard and it sort of gives that you an opportunity to see what happens when that person didn't expect that kind of. So those are just some things that I wanted to share with you. I thank, thank you for having me. Certainly willing to respond to any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I, I was actually here when we uh, went through the process with Gordon. And so our opportunity to meet potential candidates would be to go on visits either to their school or they will come here as well. Do you have any suggestion on who we might talk to in terms of to get a feel for that person other than from themselves? And if you go to their district or?
There's two things that, that I've used in the past that I think work pretty well. First of all, you have to understand, so if you were to call, to call me and say, Paul, you're a finalist, we're gonna come to, or visit you next Friday, can you, you know? Um, I'm gonna probably put people in a room that more than likely are gonna tell, tell me that I'm really one of them. Um, I did not do that, but I, I'm sure that some people would. Um, I told my secretary, I want every constituency group in the room for these people to meet. So I want custodians in there, I want paraprofessionals, I want teachers, I want parents, I want town people, you know, you just name it. I want that, that's who should be in that room meeting. To talk about the candidate. Um, I find that one of the best things is when you bring the candidate to East Long Meadow. And what we do is we try to set up individual groups to meet with those people. So we'll put five teachers in them. Put four or five administrators in, all different. We'll put paraprofessionals in them, secretaries in them, custodians, we'll put kids in them. And then we'll ask them some simple questions, you know, like a form saying, you know, what was your impression of this person? We don't ask them to vote on that person, just what did you like about this person? What questions might you have had about that person? So that's, I think that's more effective because it really puts the, the candidate on the line. But I will tell you a story. A long time ago, um, a very long time ago, when I was a teacher, I taught in West Springfield. And uh, respond to your question, Greg. So a long time superintendent was leaving in West Springfield. He had some health issues. And for some reason, uh, I was selected as to represent the teachers of the entire district in West Springfield. Don't have a clue how I got selected, but I was. Uh, so I was the only teacher on this, in quote, search committee. And we were split into a couple of groups and our group was going to go to uh, Rhode Island to interview a candidate. He actually ended up being the superintendent. So uh, we're driving with a businessman, very prominent businessman in West Springfield, and we're driving to meet this in the town where we're gonna go to meet the superintendent at his set office. And as we're driving in the, in the town, the gentleman turned to me, I was driving the car, he said, I want you to stop. I said, where are we stopping? He said, see the barber shop over there? I'm going to the barber shop. Knocked on the door and he went in and said, I'm from West Springfield, Massachusetts. We're interviewing, oh, his name was Felix Toromeo. Is your superintendent? And we know, and that, so not saying you should stop at every barber shop and coffee shop, but that was something I never forgot that this, this gentleman thought that that was the way he was gonna find.
Did somebody know him there? Did they, did he?
Yeah, I remember that there were some people say, oh yeah, we know the guy, you know? So at least it, it, it was, but it was, I thought was important that here was this gentleman, very prominent businessman in West Springfield, decided. I'm not gonna go through the traditional stuff. I'm gonna go talk to the guys in the barber shop and find out.
So you mentioned Rhode Island for the West Springfield candidate. How far would you recommend we look in our search? I know this will be New England?
Yeah. Not New England, New York.
Yeah.
Uh, because you're gonna find people are somewhat, the northeast is pretty similar in terms of how school districts are run. Uh, go beyond that, things get different. You get into a large county school districts, it's very, very different than, than what we're, that we're are used to in, in Massachusetts, you know? So if, if we were, if what East Long Meadow was in Colorado, you would be with ten or twenty other towns in a big county group.
One superintendent.
One superintendent, yeah. So I would think that, I'm not saying that it's a wrong, it's, it's not, not that you should not look at someone from outside. But what I'm saying to you is that normally if I was doing a search, I would be getting, sending out your information to the superintendent organizations in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, uh, obviously Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Vermont, Maine, actually. Have you decided, like, have you had that discussion of what you're looking for in terms of experience and all of that?
We have not done that yet. But we will in terms of the job description and the um, the, the posting for the job, uh, we will tackle those parts of it, yeah, yeah. Questions from the committee? Word, word, timing is right for us. We're early, right? Wouldn't you say?
I think you're doing well.
Okay, yeah. We've got a new building to sell.
Sure.
We've got a fantastic school committee. Crickets. You know, our budgets sound relatively, so I think it's gonna be a relatively sought after job, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the first year will not be an easy year because that person will be bringing the new, the, the new school on board. And that's a very, very busy, busy time. And uh, obviously that person's gonna need a lot of help from people who are currently here. Um, but after that, so when I left Hampton, Wobraham, the person who replaced me was Marty O'Shea, who's now the superintendent at Long Meadow. So Marty had been the principal of Minutetown. And so I left him with the beginning of the new Minutetown. So we, we passed all of the overrides and all of that, and then I left. I had it in my mind that he, if I was going to, it would not be in everyone's best interest if I stayed and left the project halfway done and then a new person came on. So to me, it was either I leave now or I stay for three more years. Cause that's how it takes. So
Yep.
I decided that I was gonna leave. I was qualified to retire. It's a good question.
Yeah, it will be, I know it'll be a challenge for the, for the new person to jump right in. We're literally gonna open the building, you know, a week after they start. And um, I mean, it's run very smoothly so far, you know, knock on wood, um. But I think it will be part of the appeal, I'm hoping, uh, cause that'll be a brand new office, uh, you know, for as much as that needs. Uh, in a brand new building, so. Okay. Paul, I wanna thank you for coming out today.
Thank you.
May uh, touch base with you again as we go through the process.
Sure.
And uh, we'll see you tomorrow night. Are you going to the uh, planning board? I saw you there last time.
Yeah.
It's here tomorrow night, so you know it's
I know, I know. Yeah, I should be there.
Oh, your neighbors, right?
Yeah.
Okay, big here. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we have the East Long Meadow Public School Ball Status Report and Draft of the twenty-five, twenty-six ELPS SMART goals.
So the draft of the SMART goals are embedded in this presentation and they're based on looking at the data um, and tweaking it based on uh, the meetings of this year. So um, it's not clear, so it's me today. Um, the first page is our demographics and it's always just kind of important to check in and see where we're at. There has been a little movement in a lot of these groups. Um, however, our percentage of kiddos who are white has continues to shrink. Last year it was seventy-three and this year it's seventy-one point three. And just, you know, another reminder as to uh, all the kiddos who are going to East Long Meadow, those are the ones meeting that is all of our students. So that's embedded in our SMART goals, supporting the whole child. Um, by creating a safe, joyful, nurturing, equitable, and inclusive learning environment, which students feel valued, connected, and ready to learn. We will see an increase in daily attendance and a reduction in chronic absenteeism. ELPS students will also show an increased sense of community and belonging as reported in the ELPS wellness screeners. And I would argue that would also, it's also going to increase academic achievement. So we will be looking like we did last year at our daily attendance rate, at our chronic absenteeism percentage, and on student reported percentages on belonging on our wellness and climate screeners. So we have our action steps. Um, a lot of these are, are similar to last year. We are lucky that we did onboard, hire and onboard a new ELPS coordinator of MEPO, student belonging and family engagement. Um, who will be working uh, with schools, with principals, and with kids um, to help increase improve school climate. Not that it needs to be improved, but there's always work that we can do, um, and increase family engagement. Um, so uh, I know there are, but it's a lot of information here, so I don't wanna read them all to you unless you would like me to.
That is true.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
So uh, this is our attendance rate through uh, the second. So last year is on the right-hand column and through the second is here. So we're looking good in terms of our percentages. And we gave our first uh, wellness and climate screener and these are just a few results from our three to five belonging responses. We have eighty-five point eight percent of the kiddos in grades three to five saying they can feel like they can be themselves at school. And ninety-one point five percent of the kiddos feel that they are welcome at their school. So the way that the teams look at this is um, the wellness screeners, we do look for students who we, we wanna check in with if they're reporting. We have other questions like, I feel lonely this amount of time, I feel happy. So the counselors do look at that information, but the MTSS teams also look for trends. Because obviously we want all kids to feel like they can be themselves at school. So they dig deeper into the why and we try different initiatives to improve this. And this is the six to twelve belonging responses. So uh, I thought this was really great for secondary. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of kids who don't feel like they're part of the community or kids who feel like they can't be their true self. There's always room for improvement, but um, middle school and high school are tough times for kids and so responses to start off the year. And then we have our accountability data. Now, this is from last year. This is our chronic absenteeism for the non-high school and high school. So the way that the accountability system works is they basically group the high school kids and then everybody else. Um, obviously uh, for the MCAS, it doesn't include a K to two students. Um, so as you can see, we uh, exceeded or improved our target in the non-high school groups for all, at schools for all kids. And uh, we did exceed our target at the high school, um, but we did decline a bit for low-income students and students with disabilities. Um, so it's a constant effort because obviously if kids aren't at school, it's going to be hard for them to learn. Um, and the high school does have a graduation coach that works with kids, a whole team. So it's definitely something that's continued to work on to make sure kids are getting to school. And stop me anytime. I'm gonna just go through with.
Yep.
Um, I'm really excited about this. This is advanced coursework completion at the high school. So you'll see in a few minutes, the, the MCAS scores at the high school dipped, um, and they dipped across the state. I'll talk about that. Um, and one major reason that I'm thinking is because uh, it's no longer required for graduation. So students didn't necessarily, not all students necessarily uh, put forth their best effort. Um, but advanced coursework is, is separate from that. That's really a, a group effort at the high school. And it starts actually at um, the elementary schools, getting kids ready to be able to take these advanced classes in the high school. And so what I was really excited about is students with disabilities exceeded the target and went up nine point seven percentile points. And so that's been a target of making sure all kids have access to advanced coursework completion and reducing barriers so that all kids can excel. So that was an exciting thing to see. And our graduation rate, and like I said, we have a graduation coach. This is looking great. These are our uh, goals for teaching and learning. So um, we continue to implement high-quality instructional materials um, and instruction rooted in struc, in universal design for learning and culturally sustaining pedagogy. Um, and want to see increases in um, our academic scores across lines of rates, socioeconomic status, ethnicity, and special education status. So these are just aggregates right now. Um, but basically we looked at our, our scores from last year, which are listed here and raised the bar a bit. Uh, ideally, Uh, ideally, you'd want eighty percent or more at or above grade level by the end of the year, but we're also doing increments that are, are. Attainable within the year, and you'll see that a lot of these are quite high, so uh. We have a lofty goal, but we have excellent answers. Any questions on these, did you want me to go through?
Please.
And so these are our action steps, we continue to provide professional development, coaching. Uh, frequent classroom observations with actionable feedback. Um, and building at MTSS teams to monitor interventions and make sure kids are getting what they need and no one's falling through the cracks. Um, I've already started uh, learning walks with principals, I've done three uh, um, so far. Um, and they have, looked like uh, Ms. Delanta said earlier, this is a great start to the school year, um, and what we do is we. We talk about things that we saw and we send out trends, we send out glows, things that we think are great and things to think about, some grows. Um, and it's just an overall trend, it's, it's not individual feedback at this point. Um, the professional development this year is going to be half curriculum-based and half whole-child based, so um, there'll be curricular sessions. Facilitated by department heads around curriculum and instruction, and then we'll also have choice from. Around our social emotional learning um, through Benetta Lightfoot, who is the director of belonging equity. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging at uh, LVPUC, and um, we also are bringing in James Schultz is from Safe Schools and. We also have a partnership with Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, so we'll have a lot of different options for them as well. And so here's the data from the beginning of the year, so this is not last year, this is this year, um. The, the blue is and green are basically kids not needing extra support. Um, the yellow and red are kids who are needing extra support, so. We ended the year last year with kindergarten at seventy-three at percent at or above grade level and, or in the green or the blue. Um, we're entering with forty-four percent needing support, last year we entered with twenty-nine percent, um. The good news is, in addition to the, the tier one instruction that they're getting, there uh, this is where the kids are getting their um. High dosage tutoring, the kids who we've identified with Amplify, we started that today. They were so excited, I actually was there to help get them set up, so. Um, our neediest group is that first grade group, and you know, research shows if you target first grade, it's, you get the most bang for your buck, so.
This is remote tutoring?
The remote tutoring while other kids are getting small group time. So they're really excited, they're excited about their headphones and the microphone and that's.
Still in the classroom with everybody else, or how?
So some of the, we set it up so that some are in the classroom with other folks, but we also wanted to take the burden off of teachers trying to manage lots of things, so. The interventionists um, have some blocks of time in their schedule where we've brought all of the kids to one classroom. Got them all logged in, as you can imagine, getting a bunch of first grade kids all logged in, there's lots of things to click. So they all got set up, and so um. We decided that would be a great way to kind of introduce the program, so teachers weren't feeling overwhelmed while they were also trying to do small group instruction with kids in case there's technical difficulties or other things, but.
And how many students are gonna use that service?
Thirty-two kids.
Total?
We got thirty-two slots. Um, and then second grade is in um, better shape than last year, we had. Kids begin fifty percent needing support, this year is thirty-seven percent, um, so, and. As you remember from the growth last year, we got a lot of kids at or above grade level by the end of the year, the goal made all of them, um. And this is our iReady and iXL, so the three through eight schools use iReady reading. Um, and this is uh, where kids are at, and. Um, it's important to know that yellow is not something to be worried about at the beginning of the year, because yellow. Green basically means that kids have mastered some of the grade level standards that they're entering. So if I'm a fourth grade student and I'm in the green, I've already mastered some fourth grade standards. If I'm in the yellow, I've mastered my third grade standards and I'm ready for those fourth grade standards. Anyone in um, the red are, are behind um, terms of some gaps in their learning, and that's what, who we target immediately in terms of supports and interventions. Uh, but we're in great shape if you look at it that way, in terms of kids really being ready to, to um, access the curriculum this year. And then the iXL is what we use for ninth and tenth grade. Um, again, the same scale in terms of the dark green, light green, um. So we have about twenty-eight percent of the kids needing some extra support. And as we've shared along the way, the ninth grade team has set themselves up in teams so that they can provide extra support for kids. Who need it, um, it's often really difficult to schedule interventions in a second, in a high school, and they've done a great job to. Create some freedom schedules to make sure kids are getting the support they need.
Now, can I ask, what kind of support are they getting at the high school level, cause that's concerning, that looks concerning to me.
The, yes, so, and the interesting thing about the iXL feeding is. It does measure different things than iReady, um, in the sense that iReady is uh, phonics, phonemic awareness, if, if that's where kids are at. Otherwise, they test out and they max score, uh, vocabulary and in comprehension and informational text and um. Literate, literary text. iXL also is claims to assess grammar and writing. Um, the kids aren't actually writing, it's just based on multiple choice. So uh, they do get access to uh, the iXL personalized learning, but they also get uh, support in their funda- foundational classes. So the foundational classes are organized around who needs what supports, um, and they're taught by. English and math teachers. So that's, my goal is to. Uh, you know, as we continue to implement high-quality instruction materials, make these numbers shrink and really catch kids much earlier, because yeah, it's concerning if you have that many kids.
So foundation courses are, they're utilizing the results of these of iXL. To inform the instruction.
That's already.
Happening.
Close, yes, closer to, to close those gaps so that they're. Able to access the grade level content.
How many years will we use iXL?
This is only the second year, really perfecting it, so.
Were the numbers similar, I know it's slightly different cohort, cohort, but.
Yeah, they tend to do worse on iXL than iReady, and um, you know, and so you see an eighth grade group looking fine on iReady and then the next year, so I, you know, it's two different tests, so it's. Hard to, to compare apples to oranges, and you know, um, there's definitely a culture of iReady and. Birchland, whereas that culture of iXL is not necessarily there for ninth graders, so. I'm saying that in terms of how, how much people are really investing into this at this point, um, and how accurate the data is, but for the most part. You know. Kids are gonna do the best that they can, and so, you know, the, the idea is to make sure that we're addressing the kids who have gaps so they can get supports.
Cause that's saying one in three are having gaps, correct, one in three students in third?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that common in other districts, you know, is that a, so iXL be different than iReady?
So iXL unfortunately does not provide national norms for anything above eighth grade, which is really frustrating, so I can't really compare. Um, I do have national norms for iReady, but um, it feels like iXL is trying to catch up to the diagnostic game. They were personalized learning, and now they're trying to do something similar to, as iReady in terms of having computer-adapted tests and things, so I think we'll see more things than i, iXL as we go along, but. They're pretty new to this game, at least.
If not, do we plan to stay with iXL, or? Are you, would you have like the mindset to shift to something else?
Yeah, we talked with the, the high school to see, you know, if this is working, but um, they really do appreciate the fact that the personalized learning is connected directly to how kids do, so. That's helpful, um, just like uh, uh, personal cards that iReady is connected, and. While there's a diagnostic for the older kids, they don't have personalized, iReady does not have personalized learning for anyone above ninth grade. At this point, so that was the deterrent to continue with iReady.
Are we able to, or has there been any discussion of adding any of the new um, DESI requirements for graduation in our goals?
So the new DESI, we, while we're working on the new competency determination, which is different than the graduation, I'm just saying that for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there is a piece of that now, so that has evolved. At first it was kind of like, it was a local decision, and then DESI turned around and said, actually, you know. We have to have these things, and so we do need to show how kids are mastering the skills.
Mm-hmm.
So that will be aligned to the SMART goals, but we are in the process of helping that.
So those will be added into this?
I don't know about this year, because we're, we have till December to do that, so.
Okay.
You know, it might be something that we talk about and implement the following year, but obviously the goal is always that kids are mastering the skills, right, so. Um. That's one of the things that they're working on, on the, during department times and the professional development day are. Are really um, tightening up our common assessments, especially for math and ELA.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and determining exactly what mastery looks like, that's what we have. Competency determination. So. Um, this is uh, the national norms comparison for iReady, so. For reading, again, this is third grade through eighth grade. And we're all the way on the right, and the national norms all the way on the left, and that's the national norm from fall twenty-two to twenty-three. Then the year-to-date's twenty-five to twenty-six, and then mass. And so we are starting the year with kiddos much more ready to learn than Massachusetts as a whole and nationally. And then this is our trend of how we start off a year, year to year. Um, and as you can see, it's pretty steady. Um, what we wanna see is, obviously it would be great to have more kids starting the year in the green, but really reducing that red. Um, by continuing to improve tier one instruction and, and making sure that our interventions are aligned, so that we're catching kids early and getting the supports that they need. Um.
Where'd those four hundred students go?
Um, so we used to use iReady reading with uh, K to two, and then we switched over to DIBELS. Um, partly because, um, mostly because we get better information from DIBELS for the early, um, earlier ages. But also DIBELS was a completely uh, approved early literacy screener, whereas iReady was if we did. Their one-on-one assessments, which is basically what DIBELS does, so. That's why we end up switching, so that, there's the gap.
Yep.
We didn't lose five hundred kids.
Good.
Does this, could, does this slide concern you at all either?
This to me is, having twenty-six percent of kids, yes.
And even in the, in the yellow, too.
Well, the yellow at the beginning of the year, remember, means that they. For the most part, now they, you can break this down into each category, so I could have. Uh, I could be uh, green in phonics, but yellow in my comprehension. Um, but generally speaking, at the beginning of the year, yellow means I'm ready to go. It doesn't, it doesn't really mean, and I just went to the um, our iReady rep to make sure I was on par point with this, but. It doesn't really mean they're one grade level below. If I'm starting fourth grade, I've got my third grade standards, I'm one grade level below because I don't have any fourth grade standards.
Why do they report it like that?
I don't know, cause it makes it really confusing, because at the end of the year, it's a totally different story.
Doesn't even, yeah.
Yeah. So obviously, the more kids we have in green, that's great, because we have kids really ahead of the game, but for me at the beginning of the year, I wanna see that red shrill. Um, so going back in time again to our accountability, uh, we are uh, substantial progress towards target, they don't give an accountability percentile to districts just for schools. Um, but all of our schools are not requiring assistance or intervention, which is to be. Um, and it, it was great to see that there is a high um, growth for the most part across the board for ELA grades three to eight. Um. And uh, like I said earlier, there was a dip in the scores from MCAS, so there was low growth because of the achievement. Decline, so does the growth. Um, and then achievement for three to eight, we uh, exceeded or improved in most of the areas, um, declining with high needs. And uh, multirace kiddos who identify as multirace, um, who are not Latino. Um, so you know, again, we kind of look at trends and try to figure those things out, but for the most part, um. We were either no change or incre- increased, and I took down notes on this, so let you know that they. Third grade, actually, this is not one of the ones that dipped, just the high school and science in general. Um, again, uh, the achievement dipped and, I have this here. So. It averaged in a, a six percentage point drop in the high school ELA scores across the state. So when I dug a little deeper into this, what really brought us down is the performance on the essay. Which could mean one of two things, it could mean that we need to improve writing instruction, um, and uh. We do have a, a new curriculum in place that we're still adopting, that will help address that, plus excellent teachers. Um, but I would also think about a high school student who might think, um, this doesn't really count towards anything. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time writing an excellent essay if I don't need it to graduate.
So this is tenth grade?
Yes, this is the high school, so we did fine on all the reading um, standards, it was the writing standards that we dipped quite a bit on.
What was the percentage that we dipped for ELA?
Um, in general, all students thirteen point three percentile points, it was a deep increase, decrease for ELA and math.
Well, those are, that's not percentile points, though, is it?
Those are points.
Total points, cause it's out of five hundred, so thirteen is like three percent.
And you said the state average was six, or was that?
Yeah. Sure, I have the word, correct.
And it's.
Yeah, and from nineteen, two thousand nineteen, the state dipped ten, ten. Ten percent, actually, they say percentage points, six percentage points.
That's not a percent, though.
Not here, but in general, so we're doing better than the state, if that's the case, right? Cause the state dipped six percentage points.
Thirteen points alone.
It is, this is not what we wanna see.
Yeah.
That's, um. But yeah, trying to think about incentives for MCAS. When it's not part of the graduation.
That's certainly an issue that's seen across the Commonwealth, as you just mentioned, but how are we, are, I mean. I don't even know how to wrap my mind around that, like, we can't, like you said, can't necessarily incentivize a. Student to want to sit and put everything they've got into that essay when they don't, they no longer need it to graduate. So how do we combat that?
And the SS is not a sprint, it's a marathon, a lot of what it is stamina, too, right, so if I'm exhausted and I don't have that.
How have other districts performed?
Uh, there's a well, dip across.
All of them.
Can I make a comment on why I think the scores are so low?
Absolutely.
I think it's, as I've seen in like high school, a lot of people are using AI to write essays, so kids don't know how to write essays anymore.
They already forgot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like MCAS, when I took it, I almost got a perfect score on it, it was not, it's, it's not a difficult essay, but. Every class I'm in, every English class, they AI their essays, and kids don't know how to write anymore. Even in AP classes, so. It's not just like standard or honors, it's an AP issue too, it's all across.
And you can't get AI to write your MCAS essay?
No.
Right.
Can't do it on the AP exams either, that's why people didn't do as good. As they did in the classes.
Okay, that's a really important insight, who are writing our AI accomplices?
They should write essays in class then, instead of writing them at home, they write them at home and use AI, but if you did it in class, that could change, help them.
Yeah, and then I think that's also why the math Excel scores and the English scores are so low, cause kids don't know how to use grammar, so they just have AI do it.
Trouble.
Nice, thoughtful thing that's been said all evening.
I think a lot of it has to do also, though, with our messaging and if there's any incentives for the kids to do well on it. Um.
Because there are pockets of schools that have done well.
Yeah.
Their MCAS.
And I think that's something, it's a learning thing too, it's like, how do we, how do we?
Not everyone dipped like that.
Right, dipped across the state, I'm not saying we all dipped this much, but yeah, like, what is, what, what, what is the why? Is it the AI, is it how we message, and you know, there's a lot of things to think about. To, of that. And then math. Math were even stronger, which is not something I would've said a couple years ago, so I'm very excited about this, in terms of grades one through. So we do give the iReady math to first grade and second grade, um. On the other hand, uh, the ninth and tenth, as you can see. Is concerning, and it is always interesting to see the end of the year eighth grade math scores and then look at the iXL, so.
Yeah.
Think, one of the things stated there is, is make you ask questions, right, so.
How was iXL last year?
Hmm?
How was?
Uh.
How was IXL last year? Similar.
We, we also did not do as well on the IXL as the kids had done previously in uh. Uh, eighth grade I I ready.
That's fifty seven percent of the gaps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where are these kids taking the tests? Like, is it in their math class? Is it? What kind of setting is it in?
It is in their math class.
Okay. Um.
And is it over, how long is the test, the assessment?
I think it's a forty five minute. They just changed it. They had, they have a flex and they have a level up. Um, and so we just switched over to level up. Um, flex, what they had last year, allowing kids to even skip um questions they didn't know. Um, because it was really more designed for figuring out what kids knew. As opposed to kind of also using this as a barometer for the school. So the, the new level up gives them grade level standards. Um, so what do you think, where do you think the disconnect is fine from? So if we're saying like by, you know, how this data looks. Students that are leaving eighth grader in pretty good shape, but then like maybe they're, I mean, I don't understand the disconnect between the eighth and the ninth. Do you like? Think that there's something?
Well, when do they take this assessment?
The beginning of the school year and in math class.
So you have a some, you have the summer.
Yeah, but this is, this is.
I'd also be interested to see what their grades are in these math classes as well.
This is one assessment that they're taking. Like, what are the teachers saying about?
So I think you're all coming up with some really good things here, like, you know, could we change the testing environment, right? At Burchland, they shut down. It's like an MCAS day. Kids take the I ready. If they don't finish because it's on time. They go someplace else to finish. So are there lessons we can learn from just how we administer the assessments?
I think the data that um, you know, I both I ready and IXL provide are actually more insightful than MCAS. To me, MCAS, it's a couple of days, very high stakes testing that many of our students. Because of anxiety or whatever the issue might be, that's not gonna be necessarily how we know how they're doing. This is how we're really gonna know and be able to like drill down with the specific skills. This is how we know how they're doing.
Yep.
And it's the disconnect to me is what's really standing out. We're saying in eighth grade, the students are basically getting it. And then by the time we get to the way that we're assessing them in ninth grade, there's a major, there's a major gap.
But it's two different products.
It, it absolutely is.
And so like, is there, like, in terms of looking at the questions that are being asked versus like what was covered? Because I think it's hard, if this was the same product that followed them all the way through.
But in theory, the concepts should be the same.
Well, it's one grade level, two grade level behind, three grade level. So I mean. They're behind, the assessment is showing they're behind significantly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The high school will be able to answer more specific questions. They'll bring, they can bring the domain. They can break it down between ninth and tenth grade. Um, you know, this does uh assess all kinds of things like geometry and measurement and things like that. Whereas in ninth grade, they're taking for the most part algebra. Um, so one way of looking at this is maybe we just focus in on that algebra domain in terms of measuring how well we're doing there. Um, but yeah, I think you have a point. I mean, it's two different products, so it is hard to compare.
And all the students take it.
Yes.
Right? And so is there any, like, so in terms of like students that are on IAP or five oh four, the math, they may have been exposed, like, I'm just. Wondering if there's a difference in terms of what they've gained through and what they're being asked to perform on this test.
Yeah.
At.
Yeah, your computer adapted test, so I I can't even tell you what the questions are at this point.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Are we not aligned uh or are we not pacing correctly or?
Actually, uh, the eighth graders who took algebra last year did really well on the algebra final, which is the same final that ninth grade algebra kids take. So that is aligned. Um, this is just bringing up more questions. Do I think fifty three percent of our kids are below grade level in math? No. Um, so I think there's some great questions that you brought up that we can do deeper into.
Maybe to Katn's point, kids are learning completely differently now.
Yeah.
And I don't know, are we adapting as well as we could be? Maybe that's a big question for a lot of days coming, but I'm not sure. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that um kid, like, I know at least, like, I'm in AP Calc right now, a lot of kids, like, they do their work, but like the. Lower levels, like, they'll just like AI the work and they don't know how to do it. And then it comes to the test and they fail. So it's a really big issue, like, it's in every grade.
So you're seeing photo math?
Yeah, photo math, they use chat GPT.
I mean, one way around that is when, you know, you were talking about the competency determination is looking at mastery of standards, right? So, you know, like giving that in the class essay, do you know how to write an essay or not, right? Um. So.
Well, if AI is truly um throwing us off, then we have to adjust. How we're doing things and maybe that means not allowing. You know, the laptops and phones in the class when we're writing essays. So maybe we go back to handwriting essays, you know, I don't know. We could do, you know, do handwriting more, right?
Not really. I know that for like AP Lang, uh, our teacher would have us, we have a lockdown browser in AP classroom where you can't access anything else. So you could, you type your essay and then you'd have to submit and then you couldn't access anything else.
It's also ways to identify if it's AI as well.
Yes.
So I mean, if there's really hard.
It is hard.
Because you're using AI to detect AI.
Yeah.
That's what's really.
Right, but I know teachers that have been able to do it. And I mean, is there some kind of policy in place in their classrooms that if you do get caught using this, like, what are the consequences for it?
Are there AI policies?
But in the, but in the same breath.
We have a policy set for many soon and AI is one of them.
Yeah, but in the same breath, some, a kid using Grammarly.
Yeah, that's AI.
Will get detected by, would get detected by AI. Uh, which is slightly different then, but very similar to spell check. But that's AI too. Yeah.
So.
AI has been around for a long time. We're just realizing it now.
But composing the whole essay is.
That's the problem. That is the problem, right?
Do, do, are the instructions, Galen, for your assignments to not use AI specifically, or is that not brought up?
It's brought up usually in like the syllabus, like teachers will say they have like copy and paste detectors. If you get caught using AI, AI, you get a zero.
Okay.
It's usually, like, I think all my classes have said that.
It's discouraged stuff, it's allowed.
No.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Well, if we're using it openly and we're doing.
No, but in some way, it's not a silly question because we are, as educators, going to have to adapt and there is going to be some of it that's gonna need to be allowed. We can't outpace this.
No.
We cannot outpace.
Early stages of calculus.
Yeah.
That's where, we're at the very stage when calculus came in, oh, your brain, you're not gonna be able to do the more. The, the calculations, the calculations got easy, more difficult than the calculators helped, but they weren't necessarily, we're learning how to use AI, not necessarily. Uh, it's gonna, some people are using it to do everything, but some will get to the point where it just becomes another tool.
Yeah.
This is our second year of this assessment. How does this sort of line up with MCAS data in terms of math and language?
Uh, this is just quickly the I ready. Uh, very similar to before, high growth, three to eight. Um, some high growth in high school despite the dip. Our dip in mathematics was not the same as the dip in ELA. Um, just to get there. Uh, as you can see here, so this is the, how we did in terms of the MCAS, the different subgroups for achievement.
Is the target based on the prior year? Is that what?
Yes, and they keep changing the target. They keep making it.
Our year removing the target.
Yeah.
They're removing the target, yes.
But will our target be lower than five oh seven next year? Because we're slowing this year.
That's a great question. How do they go when that, I think it keeps, I don't think they adjust for going backwards, no.
Is that a statewide target or that's an East Carolina target, five oh seven?
Eight makes it.
For all, all district, all districts is five oh seven?
No.
East Carolina.
It's individualized for each district.
Based on prior year.
Yeah, it's different.
Yeah, you thought your history of that, so the algorithm, yeah, yeah. It's a very interesting algorithm that's hard to parse out, I have to say. And science has dipped as well. Uh, across the board, but also. So I, I think you brought up a lot of different things, you know, testing environment.
Just did the law.
Yeah.
Science more than the others.
No, not English.
No, we tended to do really well and.
I mean, some.
In the past few years, we just did quite well.
Last year, I had a school of recognition, the high school was from Anthony LA. So obviously, things haven't changed dramatically. That all of a sudden, you know, kids are, teachers aren't teaching, kids aren't learning, like something else is going on, you know? Uh, because yeah, we had a high achievement and high growth at the high school last year and we're bad at Mapleshire, we're schools of achievement.
Right.
Uh, recognition. So. Yeah, I think it's like, like AI, the times are changing with MCAS, what do we do? And then our last one is always about creating an inclusive and supportive culture and climate because again, it still feel like they belong. Research shows they're not going to do well at school and it's also gonna affect other things. Um, and so as I talked about before, we look at an individual level at this um survey data, but we also look for trends. Um, so the beginning of the year, we have seventy six point nine percent of kiddos three through fives feel like the staff treat the students respectfully. Always, and then twenty ten seven sometimes, and as you know, kids often mean sometimes as usually. Um, so a very small never, and also students at my school treat each other respectfully, a very small never, which is great. Um, and then about six to twelve, my school is inclusive of all backgrounds and identities. Again, pretty strong responses and a positive. And in my school, teachers greet me um daily, for the most part, most, so that's great. So, yes, we have work to do, um, but we are not alone in the state, um, and uh. We just have to dig deeper into the data and see what, what's really going on. But this is where we're at.
I was curious, earlier on, you talked about belonging and connection and how that benchmarks compared to other schools, because like you just said. You know, feeling like you matter and looking at that population does tend to affect academics, so. I just, how do we stack up? Do we know?
So in the past, we used Panorama Dashboard. We stopped using Panorama for budget reasons. It, we were able to get a new data dashboard for um. A much lower price that can do more. However, the one thing we don't have that Panorama allowed us to have is national benchmarks for those questions. So I don't have national benchmarks for those questions, but we always did really well in terms of belonging and culture and climate. As an aggregate. When you disaggregate, you start to see some patterns with different groups of kiddos who are not necessarily feeling that way.
And how are we addressing those patterns?
Exactly. So uh, that's one of the things that the MTSS teams do. So for example, at the high school, Frank brought this to all the department heads, he brought this to the staff, they did a lot of different things. What, what's going on? What's the why? What are some things that we can do?
Are we gonna be really big like in the DEI meeting? Because it hasn't started up yet and last year kind of. You know, we had some ups and downs with even meetings and I don't even know, like, from a federal level. Are we even allowed to do that? I don't know.
I'm not sure if we're allowed to, but Gordon said we'll start up in November.
Oh, we'll start in November, okay, because that kind of goes to Carrie's question, which is how do, you know, what's the bigger picture? How are we talking about?
So yeah, so one of the things that ended up happening is changing policies, right? So we did, uh, we revised um as a district equity and. Um, diversity committee, we revised a bunch of policies around safe spaces, anti-discrimination.
Yeah.
And then brought to the school committee too. So that's an example of a big thing that happened. Alright.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, that was let go, we can move on to the assistant superintendent, you want three, four, or play six first for a report?
Yeah. Uh, so attached is a spreadsheet that's designed as a financial update for the FY twenty six school budget as of September thirtieth. Um, as a reminder, this report also includes grants involving accounts. Uh, if you go to page five. That brings you right to the uh spreadsheet. All the salaries are on the top section of the spreadsheet and um. Eighty percent of our budget is for salary, there's different items that fall under salary. Um, most of the salaries are encumbered at the beginning of the school year, uh, however, which you can see down the bottom there when uh. The salary side has twenty nine million dollars budgeted. We've expended four million and encumbered twenty three point eight million, leaving an available one point eight million. So you can see that the, the bulk of it has already been encumbered. Um, when, as you go down the list here, the athletics. Coaches and game event staff, they're not encumbered there until, you know, it's expended. Um, under the nurses and medical staff, we have hourly uh staff or pay as needed per IP needs. Clarithole and custodial, those are really longevity for this paid at year end. That's remaining there. Paraprofessionals, we still have a few vacant positions, some that people start and then they quit and then we gotta post again, so. Uh, you'll see this, you know, revise as the year goes on. Um. The Coda SLPA, uh, SLPA, ELL, new names, tutors, that has a, those are hourly people, so you're gonna see the balance there. So the teachers, um, they're twenty one point one million dollars. Um, last year, I believe we were at twenty one point six million, but as you recall, we had a reduction in force, so. The number is lower this year. Um, so the, the balance that you see there is really due to FMLA leave of absence or changing in staff. Um, if somebody leaves and somebody else comes in at a lower rate perhaps, um, again, I'll keep uh monitoring this from month to month and. But I think we're in a very good place. Um, you have administration, those are just contractual obligations that are remaining there that paid out maybe at year end. Um, I broke out uh permanent building subs from the regular sub line so that we could track that. As you recall, each um school has one permanent building sub there, which really helps the school immensely. Um, and then there's just a little bit of the professional development, which mandated trainings, internal um PD that's, that's done there. Are there any questions on the salary side?
The permanent building, so that's for five, the one fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Personal development too, this is title two.
No, this is the operating. Yeah, I'm gonna need some tracking. These are just.
Twenty thousand, twenty three thousand, yeah. Um.
Yeah.
Have we always had, always had SLPA's?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't know we had them.
We have.
Yeah, good, great.
So the bottom section is your expense side of the budget, which of course is the remaining twenty percent, which is not a whole lot to run a district on. Um, as you make your way down, the copiers are not encumbered yet. Actually, the town does that purchase order and they just have not um, you know, done that yet. I'm sure it's gonna be on the next uh report that I bring to you. Uh, contracted services. So what do I want you to know about this? Um, last year, we had uh three point two million dollars. Uh, this year, we have increased it four hundred thousand dollars for that to help um offset the rising costs that we saw last year. So again, I'm feeling good about that. Um, I've worked with, but then I'll go to the next slide, the special amount of district tuitions, um, two point five million dollars. Last year, we, we've had budget of one point one million dollars. Um, so that was a huge increase that we talked about last year. Um. And as a reminder, um. This is one funding source for out of district tuitions. We also have the IDEA grant and we also have circuit breaker revolving account. So, um. I feel good about this. Um, I've sat down with um the student services department to make sure that, you know, all of the out of district tuitions are encumbered. That we're on top of that, so um again, I'm feeling pretty confident with this. A vocational tuition, you'll see that that's rising. Um, it's a steady increase. Prior to COVID, there were only twenty three students and this year, there's seventy six. So this number has been really rising.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's tripled. I went back to look at the numbers and it was like twenty, actually, I haven't written down for somewhere.
That's great.
It is great. It's a good one.
It was twenty one, twenty three, this FY nineteen, there were twenty one students. The twenty, uh, twenty three, twenty seven, twenty nine, forty three, fifty nine, seventy and seventy six. So that's really.
I agree, it's great, like Amy said, I'm just concerned on the budget side of it as we continue to grow. I meant that some districts cap the number that they send out or?
And there, there are conversations happening about that as well, and um also what can the collaborative own handle, right?
Yeah, right.
And then there's a balance between the seven member districts, which we are one of the seven, of course, with then um. Uh, districts that are not member districts, like, because now we want more, there's more and more kids interested in coming here, so those conversations are happening and I expect them to continue. Um. Office expense, uh, custodial supplies, uh, we, we do have some supplies in here, but I, I wanna remind you that. School supplies will be funded this year from the school choice revolving account. So I had zeroed out all of the, I had to, that was part of our budget strategy. School supplies will be funded this year from the school choice revolving account, so I had zeroed out all of the, I had to, that was part of our budget strategy last year. Um, which, I'm not gonna lie, is causing me a little angst about now FY twenty seven budget, because we need to get those monies back into the budget, because. School choice is not gonna be able to keep doing this for us, so um, we'll talk about that further as time goes on, um, but.
How much is that, what did we take out?
I believe it was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Million bucks.
Yeah, half a million dollars, yeah, so um, the schools, I set up accounts for each of them, and um. We're getting the schools what they need, but we also had many conversations here at this table and then in our leadership team about, you know. Let's really look at the supplies that we are ordering and make sure these are things that we really need, because any monies that we can save. And again, I want to be clear, if we need something in the schools, we're getting it, and we want the students to get everything they need, but. Anything we can say to the school choice is going to roll over for, to help us for FY twenty seven, that concern that I am having, so um. Just wanted to remind everybody there, um, so the bottom line here is our operating budget is thirty six million eight nine five zero zero four. We have expended to date, uh, as of September thirtieth, four million nine sixty eight zero zero. We have encumbered twenty nine million six twenty eight oh two seven, leaving a remaining available balance as of September thirtieth of two million three oh six one seven eight. Um, it's imperative to remember that the balances provided are snapshot in time and are changing constantly, which is why I'm always reviewing accounts and. You know, it's unsure, uh, any questions on the operating budget?
Did you mention the balance of the teachers, that's the twenty two?
I didn't specifically say that, it does, it does seem a tiny bit high, so I wanna, I wanna delve into that, but I didn't get to do the research.
We have almost that many?
Um.
Can't, I don't think.
No, I don't, I don't think we, we have that many, oh, there are.
Let's please, okay.
And and if we, I do have um, seven leave of absences, um, I didn't hone in on how many, if I, I think the bulk are the teachers, there might be one or two. Different bargaining unit, so if somebody has to leave, um, and and. I put a long term sub in instead, that money's coming out of the sub line and not, so it could be those kind of things. But it does take some time, as you can imagine, to really go in and investigate and throw all my accounts and everybody is encumbered and. And everybody's where they're supposed to be, um, so that's what I'll be working on the next month for you.
Good.
Okay, so the next section are your grants, uh, we have uh, federal grants and state grants and private grants, the federal grants, these are, most of these are entitlement grants, so we get them year after year. Uh, there is an application process that we have to go to kind of um. Put the plan in and how exactly we're going to expend the funds, um, so we've got the, we we rolled over uh, FY twenty four special ed IDEA and FY twenty five special ed IDEA. Those amounts will be um, used up this this year, um.
So does that mean we won't be rolling any IDEA?
We don't typically roll over of the grants, this was a unique situation, they had um, a line item in the grant. About equitable services where you have to offer um, supplies or tutoring or to um, uh. Students that are not in our district, um. They're not coming to ELPS, they're private school, because the parents might have them at homeschooling or in a different, in a different school that we need to offer. But it's not so simple, cause most of the time they say, yeah, no thanks, we're, we're good. So this money has been sitting there, we couldn't expend it on anything else other than these services, which when we're doing some tutoring, but that takes a long time to eat up, you know. Ten thousand dollars, um, so um. Just recently, Desi, uh, we had to jump through some hoops to and. Explain all of this, that kind of I'm talking about now, and so they have just um, allowed us that we can spend this money on something other than. Equitable services, because we've proved that we've, we've really tried to 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 spend it, uh, just couldn't.
So is that gonna create by expending at the twenty four, the eighty change, is that creating a cliff as we were concerned about the other cliff?
Can you rephrase that?
So we're, we're uh, we're putting one point seven in IDA, IDEA this year into our operating budget, you've expended one point seven million already. The eight eighty eight of the eight sixty three.
Why did you be?
So the FY, the FY.
Talking operating budget versus the.
No, I'm talking grants.
Okay.
We're spending the grants, right, so you've expended the eight eighty eight for the FY twenty four.
Oh, that, yeah, cause I was just showing you what the full amount, that was bad for.
I've expended the FY twenty five.
That was, that was from FY twenty four that it was fully, like, all that was expended, I think we didn't just expend it now, I'm sorry if I didn't.
Oh, why is it on this chart?
Because it was the full grant, I wanted to show, to be transparent what the full amount was, and what is just remaining there.
So the eight eighty eight was expended last year.
That's wrong, yes, 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 I apologize, that's, that's.
Oh, okay, but the eight sixty three was expended this year?
No, that that was expended FY twenty five, I only have eleven thousand this year.
Oh, the twenty six?
Yes.
Roger.
I'm sorry, that that wasn't clear, you're welcome, so the current FY twenty six IDEA is eight hundred sixty four thousand, and the bulk of that, you can see the encumbrance there, seven hundred ninety seven.
You're showing it, cause there's an available balance, that's why I have them all listed, okay, yes, I get it.
Yes. Sorry about that.
No, I thought you were spending those this year.
No, 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 I feel we are in, we're in a good place, um, I do not have any concerns at this point in time, um. So as you follow them down, you're sending to the same grants, title one, title two, title four, um, then we go into our state grants, we always get the um. Excuse me, DPH Comprehensive School Health Grant, that used to be eighty thousand, they reduced it to seventy two thousand this year.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, and um. Spook Committee did already approve all of these uh, new grants, um, I don't know if it was at the last meeting or the meeting before that, uh, so all of these have been approved. Um, we get the, we have the MEKO grant, which is three hundred fifty thousand seven seventy two, and um, the bulk of that, well, it helps the transportation costs, um. To uh, you know, transport the MEKO students, um, we have a new uh, what's her title?
Coordinator of MEKO Student Lying and Family Engagement.
Yes, Chandra.
Chandra.
Stand boy. Cool, who's doing a fabulous job, um, her salary is also covered under this MEKO grant. The MEKO B grant was really last year's carryover, that they. Wanted it set up in a new grant for this year, but that's really what that money is, and actually, Heather's working with um, student services director.
And that's her.
Yeah, that's going to be for uh, supplies, did I just see, right, some curriculum for, yeah. Um, and the last private grant, that was uh, Mr. McGee was recently here for that USTA, United States. Tennis Association, uh, who gave a thousand dollars, um, thank you very much, and that'll help um, pay for tennis court rentals. So, you know, all in all, um. As a reminder, um, I spend grants down, we spend grants down, and then I uh, I go in and it's a reimbursement process, so we spend it, then I go in monthly and draw down what we have expended. So that I can make sure to stay on top of uh, revenues coming in to cover those expenses. So, um, you know, without these funding sources, we would need significantly more in our operating budget, this is um, three point four million dollars, you know, in grants, so. Are there any uh, questions on any of the grants? Okay. And lastly, you have uh. The revolving accounts. Um. The first column there is the carryover, because these are rolled over from one year to the other, so these just go from one year to the next. So you'll see the athletic revolving account, do you want me to list each one, or?
Yeah, just the ones that you're concerned about.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, there, athletic revolving, I wanted to show you um, the encumbrance also, because I think that that's important, because we haven't expended it yet, but we know we're going to. So you're gonna see that with that encumbrance, that it's actually nine thousand negative, but that's because the athletic fees and gate receipts are not posted yet in MUNIS, cause there's a, there's a time lag on that, as you can imagine. Collection of it, getting it to the town, all funds go through the town hall, and then there's a posting process, and then. An approval to that posting process before it actually hits the general ledger, and when I run the reports, it's just what has been posted in MUNIS. So there's always that little bit of a difference, um, obviously, we don't have any money there in the athletic stadium for obvious reasons, there's no rentals due to the construction project, um. School rental and miscellaneous accounts, those are things from um. JCC CAT program, the Willie Ross and miscellaneous rentals that occur. We have the student mobile technology device, that's a self-funded insurance program, which has been very successful, that has a thirty four thousand dollar balance, I feel like that's a healthy, it's not too much, you see, um, you know, there's. Different times that you'll see a drop, cause all of a sudden, there's a lot of repairs, you know, for the students, um.
Is that the total revenue for the year, we've collected all the uh?
We carried over thirty one thousand.
Right.
And so far, only twenty six hundred, so we, the way we set this up, and I I'm not gonna remember, yeah, there's, there's two or three years, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why you don't always see a huge.
When's the date, when's the payment due for students, beginning of the year?
Yes, I would think so.
So have we, is that all the revenue?
It's really Ryan's uh, you know, department.
Is that all the revenue we generate, twenty six?
Twenty six hundred?
Yeah.
No, it cut, it trickles in all, yeah, it's, it's not just collected then, I I think of the majority of it, like especially like new students who come to the district, that would be, but other times, um. It's it's throughout the year, so you'll see that number change. Um, the staff mobile technology repairs, uh, that's self-funded also, the ELEA um, just gave me a twenty five hundred dollar deposit. That would, has been deposited, but it hasn't been, hasn't posted yet in um, here. Uh, the school gift accounts, I just want you to know that fifty thousand one thirty seven that you see right there as revenue, that is ELEAF, cause that's considered like a gift, so it's, it's in that line, I know, just wanted you to know that. Uh, the tuition revolving account, um, that's really, that's Meadow Grove Preschool Program, we have fifteen full day and fourteen half day, uh, the full day is sixty three hundred, half day is twenty five hundred. Um, we fund one point seven teachers and two parents from this, and that's part of our strategy um, during the budget process, is to talk about this tuition. Account, which helps to offset um, the salaries.
And again, the revenue is low, because we haven't collected it all yet.
Right.
How do we bill for that, or how do we?
So I was just looking at that today, um, so the, the money is collected. In student services office, and it's, it's monthly typically, unless somebody prefers to pay it upfront, and then they get, oh, we give them a slight discount, if they do that, and a couple people do. Um, sometimes uh, a student might, and just as a reminder, I might be expecting a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of revenue. Which I never use that full amount, because I know what what happens, is sometimes then those kids start in the program, but then they qualify for an IEP, so now they've become. The, they're not the peer partner.
Don't try to wish any.
Correct, so they stop, yes, exactly, and then there's always the numbers that Renee, Principal Renee Lodi needs to be. Um, aware of, because there's that ratio for the number of students, um, yeah, so there, there's a lot of things that happen behind the the scenes, but um. I'm still, I'm feeling good about this, and I've tracked it out, my projections over the next couple of years, and and I will still be able to um, use this account. You know, during the budget process.
To fund it.
Yeah.
To have stuff.
Exactly, yeah. Um, circuit breaker, so I'm very happy to say that we were able to roll over nine hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Which was better than um, what I was projecting, um, you know, mid-year, I was thinking we probably four fifty five if we were lucky, um. It ended up being nine twenty five, so I'm very grateful to that, the revenue that you see there, that hundred twenty three thousand eight fifty one, that was um. I have to go to my little notes here, well, Governor Healy um, gave a supplemental, I think that's what they call it, a supplemental amount, um, for. I don't know if you recall last year, but we talked about the transportation reimbursement for um, out of district placements, and well, that is now part of the formula, which it didn't used to be. And circuit breaker um, is reimbursed up to seventy five percent, and it has been seventy five percent for the last few years, but the transportation piece. Was only at, I think it was forty six point four seven percent that we were um, reimbursed. Which was, you know, significant, I mean, every, you know, a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there, it all starts, it adds up very quickly, so she went back and um. Issued this supplemental uh, payment, and that's what it's for, it was from FY twenty four's transportation, going from the forty six point four seven percent to the seventy five percent, and that's that figure here. That was deposited over the summer. Okay.
The one twenty three.
Yes, the one twenty three.
We haven't received any of the quarterly contributions.
So I'm happy to say that we will be receiving a little bit over two million dollars this year for circuit breaker, which I'm really, really happy about, um, did we see last year? Uh, one point six million, okay, so, um.
Except because their cost.
Yes, it's because of everything that we've been talking about, yeah.
So it's filling part of the hole that we are created, but not all, even though we're receiving one.
Yep. Um, the first payment, five hundred fourteen thousand three twenty five came in on October first, so that they, yeah, they wouldn't look in for September thirtieth for me. It's gotta go in on October first, but that, so that that payment comes in um, quarterly. The next one, transportation revolving, um. We rolled over a hundred thirty seven thousand, cause remember, most of the revenue that comes in is at the year end, cause we're trying to collect it before everybody goes off. For summer vacation and forgets about transportation, um, as a reminder, that is for the students um, that are not eligible for free transportation. It's two hundred and seventy dollars uh, per student, which really equates to a dollar fifty per day, that's where that number comes from, um, so over the summer here, we've collected another eighteen thousand eight forty two. You'll see the amount in there that balance, a hundred and fifty six thousand, I just hadn't done the um, encumbrage yet to help offset the expenditure, yeah. So you'll see that change on the next uh, financial. Uh, school food service, um, Lori Paul was here at the last meeting, um, she reminds everybody that breakfast and lunch are free, the lunch reimbursement is four dollars seventy four cents, which is seventeen cent increase from the prior year. Breakfast reimbursement is two dollars ninety four cents, which is a ten cent increase from FY twenty five, um, she has a healthy balance in here, but as she mentioned to you, there's a few projects, large projects, cause when you're doing. You know, kitchen lines, it's not, it's not just ten thousand, it's fifty, sixty thousand up, and she's um, working on on those there, so. Um, I feel good about that as well, last account, school choice, um, so our monthly revenue, um, I, so there, you can see thirty six thousand has been the revenue for. I guess would be July and August, August, September, but it was only like seventeen thousand. Which I know it's gonna be higher, and it's because they, they wait, of course, until you get the October Sims and the March Sims to then do adjustments, so as this. It'll be a bottom heavy, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, that the revenue will, will go up there, so um, as of right now, uh. We see a hundred ninety thousand dollars in school choice, um, this does come in monthly with the chapter seventy, which goes to the town, and then. The town uh, books the chapter seventy in their account, and then books this into the, this revolving account for the school department, school committee uh, expense that. And so as I mentioned, um, this is. We're using this for um, supplies, and everyone's really being, you know, scrutinizing, making sure that we're making good purchases, um, the right purchases, and um. Hopefully, we'll have uh, more than we're anticipating the roll over.
What is the anticipated roll over, do you remember what we were talking? Yeah, really.
Oh, you're talking about?
When we're done, at the end of the year.
Oh, at the end of the year, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be March, that's, right, that's a problem, but this, you know, and the school committee makes a decision, um. Each year about uh. The school choice and how many slots, um, as a reminder to anybody out there, it's five thousand dollars that the district gets as a base amount, um, per student, um. And then there is a special ed supplemental component, and it depends on the services and whether that raises to nine thousand or twelve thousand, um. But it's five thousand dollars for the uh, base amount for, for student, what I don't wanna see happen is I really would like to not see. The school committee um, rely on these funds every year, because it starts to get very scary when things do happen and there's no place, I mean, I understand maybe. And again, we'll talk about that during budget.
We're already there, though, yeah, right?
Well. Get in there.
You can't go back, we're already, it's already.
Well, or.
Hooked in. Or.
We made some changes, we had a layoff, we had a, we had a large layoff, and you know, I've increased the um, special ed line, so I'm feeling good about that, and um. I'm, I'm not seeing any concerns, um, so I'm hoping that at year end, we're gonna see some different things, Greg, that won't be awkward. Does anyone have any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Thanks.
Well.
Uh, and we should uh, accept that, correct?
Yes.
Take someone to move to accept the quarterly, someone, motion made by William. Second by Amy, discussion, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close of close aye, I carry his five to do.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have MASC resolutions for the MASC, MASSS delegates, meeting on November fourteenth.
Skip six.
Oh, I already crossed it off, thank you, it's all. Six point one, old business, superintendent search process discussion and committee appointments. Um, where were we gonna start with this?
What about the ones that have already been, the, like, the admin and all that stuff like that, have we?
Oh, the administrators?
Yeah, we, have we decided?
You know, they are, okay.
Yes.
Here are Connor.
Connor Martin and Jenny Sullivan.
Open, okay.
So the Maple Shade Principal, and the Student Service, the Director of Student Services.
Samantha.
Samantha, let's call it.
Executive secretary.
But I see here, our admin, that takes our executives.
So that's six of it.
What about the parent?
Who's that, Michelle?
We don't.
Don't know the names yet, they're odd.
I got the two ads.
Oh, no, today, yeah, yeah, so.
Oh, they were, they were, they made a name, yeah.
Today.
Especially, I got three, yeah, those are three really neat.
Are the, exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. So we are still waiting for the teachers, from them, they will uh, select their own members for the committee. And as well as the paraprofessional.
Okay.
Cause they'll do the three.
They'll do those three.
Yeah, then they'll send us the reps for those, uh, the student rep, we're waiting to hear from Mr. Page, correct?
Yeah.
Who's gonna work on that?
Yeah.
Um. We still need school committee representation. We still need school committee representation.
Yes.
We can discuss that, it's so inclined. And I think that's all we can do tonight, right? Unless we talk about the size.
Yes. So, um.
And I thought there was another community member.
And a parent, I thought, so I was just gonna ask how did, was there any action on that since also we met or any process for people to express interest?
That can do that.
Have we had any interest in any of the other, any positions whatsoever beyond the ones we talked about so far?
I know Gordon got one or two uh parents, I believe he's heard from.
Parents, so he's got some emails or some.
Just, yeah. Interest, yeah.
So I guess the, so where do we start, um?
So we're at, so that the we we approved thirteen member committee.
Right.
And we listed out the positions and all but one. Which would be the one we had the last time, uh which would be uh community or a parent, parent.
No, I thought it was, there was only one parent.
Right, we have a slot for one open though.
And then.
That's what you were talking about.
A community, I thought there was a community, a community member, I don't remember.
No, there's.
No, we said a community member and a parent.
Right, so we said two and two and then just like, so.
Just the parent, that brings us to thirteen. So there's one slot not accounted for right now.
Which would be.
Uh one parent, right.
Did we want to exceed it?
Well, so the conversation was about expanding it to at least bring in two more community members, bringing it up to. Fifteen, which was the conversation we originally having when we were talking about fifteen versus thirteen. Um. So my recommendation would just be bring it up to two more to bring it to that fifteen, to be able to add those two community members. Uh and then we would have a a body of fifteen.
So they have two parents and four community members?
Well, I'd also said maybe someone from town council or the town manager.
Correct, in lieu of one of those.
Well, yeah.
You're going only to sixty.
No.
Right, right.
Yeah.
What's the body's pleasure again?
Yeah, well, so it sounds like there's a desire to go to fifteen and add a couple more slots.
Yes.
And that, so that would add two. It can either be two more community members or a community member and someone from uh the town.
Okay. Cause we already have, we already have one of the, we we already have one parent.
Yep.
Uh. Could we just take the, could we ten potentially take the one parent? And the two additional people and just make it. Kind of universal, whoever fits in that slot. We let them fit in that slot. So we're not necessarily saying, oh, we gotta wait for one more parent or two more community members. Whoever fits that, you know, obviously one of these categories would fit in that slot, we would fill.
How do we fill it? So say, so we have three spots that aren't accounted for if we go to fifteen.
Correct.
Yeah, but I thought one of those slots was already for a parent.
One is already.
It could be, we can change it because we haven't done it yet, it will be a parent, because we're not gonna be less parents, yes.
Okay.
But right now, we have three spots that are not named. The other thirteen are either named or designated for a certain position.
So then if we leave it at the one, if we leave it at.
Team, or am I not?
I'm sorry, ten and three, yeah, we have ten that are already named.
So we stay with the fifteen, with the with the number of fifteen increasing by two. We leave the one parent, and and if we leave the one parent, we just go with the original thought of adding two more community members. Then that.
So it could be parents or non-parents. That express interest.
Parent means parent.
Someone has a student in the system currently.
Or somebody that had a student in the system.
They would be a community member, I would say.
Okay.
So you could just take it off, take it off.
Correct.
So we have three slots left. Anyone who's interested could put their name into the hat.
As long as you fit one of those two categories.
Either, well, everybody does, unless you're not for me, so I don't.
Right, right, fair enough, fair enough.
Which, why would you wanna be on it, right, I guess?
Probably their community member.
They wanna move here.
Right, right, anyone there.
I think it might be, if I was watching our meetings, I might be. Still confused as to the makeup since we keep talking over, so maybe just one more time.
Okay.
Can you go through who we have and who's already appointed and what we're discussing?
Yes. So, um. In the end, we will have one student. Two school committee members. Um two administrators. Two teachers. One paraprofessional. Um. One clerk. Two, four, six, seven, eight, nine. William, you have the list, tell me what's.
One, one parent.
One, well, two, no, two parents.
Well, right now, we have one.
Right, no, we have one parent.
And we have one parent.
And two community members, we have right.
And there it is, two communities, so is that, that's twelve, right, two, four, six, eight, nine.
Student, oh, we have a student.
That's twelve.
That's twelve.
That's twelve.
And so our thirteen have been the uh extra parent that we're looking for. Um and you're, so there's one parent not named and you and you're proposing two additional.
Community member. But he wants to throw them all in the same pot.
I think there should be someone from the town too.
Then we go.
Well, so do you wanna do one parent, one community member and one town number, town official?
Then that makes, that gives us the, that still leaves us at the fifteen.
And we would uh ask for people to uh just express. Uh an email of interest and we will put the names in a hat, it'll be at least the two groups.
Or within the categories, if we're committed to the categories.
Yeah, either a parent or not parent, you know.
Well, in in that respect, we'll be, we'd have only two slots left, a parent or a community member.
So if you want to be each, is what I'm saying.
And then one of the town council.
Doesn't have to be town council, it could be town manager too.
We can send them to them and ask.
Yes.
Yes.
And they can give us.
But we're letting them make their choice, we're letting them kind of make their destiny, yes.
Okay, everybody good with that?
All right, I'm just to recap.
Yep.
Two community members, no, three.
Three, yes.
Okay. Two parents.
Yes.
One student.
Correct.
Two teachers.
Yep.
Two admin.
Yep.
Two school committee.
Yes.
One paraprofessional.
Yep, yep.
One clerical.
Yep.
And town manager or town council.
Correct.
Right.
It's fifteen.
That's fifteen, right?
Yes, I guess to play devil's advocate, based on some of our other conversations and what we heard from Paul tonight.
You're gonna do.
We already, we have two community members and then we'd have two parents, and so the other option would be add an additional school committee member.
Because you can only have two.
Can we? Cause he said.
You can have.
Oh, I get it, never mind.
It's a quorum, I know connect is different.
That that's why I have, but I didn't wanna.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's a quorum.
That's a major, so as the, like if we wanted all five of us just to be a part of the search committee, we could designate ourselves.
And we would post as the school committee though, we would post as a school committee. If three of us meet and discuss business, we would post it as a school committee.
Then how do they get around that?
Who?
Connecticut.
Instead.
Connecticut must be different.
That if they were calling those same people, the the search committee or something.
Part of the search, search committee or screening committee.
Then they were able to meet.
Must be different in Connecticut, we cannot meet a majority of this board and discuss business without posting. We all, we all know that, right? Like that, other than what you heard today, that's like, come on.
If you de, you can designate yourself as, we could designate ourselves as the screening committee, the five of us.
And we would post as a school committee though. I would, I mean, I would look legal.
How could you do that? We wouldn't be able to do that, that's people's privacy. If we're looking at.
Which is why we're not doing it. If we are, at my understanding, if we wanna go to legal and ask them, but. I have never heard of a screen committee being able to meet.
Be able to get around that though.
Could just be, I I'm not saying that I want this, this is not what I want, but I'm just saying that we could, in theory, be, we could just, like I've said.
Three of us.
Take the five of us and be the search committee.
Oh, you're proposing.
No, well, we can't, because we would post it as the school committee and it would be open session. Unless it's privy to executive because of the.
That probably would be because you would go into executive.
For that, but I don't know that for sure, I don't know that. I don't know if it's subject to executive session, but it's not what we're.
That's right.
You're gonna talk about three and three is still.
Yes, and I knew that, but then I don't, I guess I went down that road, because he said.
Connecticut.
It's seven oh two. Sorry.
So let's stick with the two.
Same thing.
Thank you.
All right, we'll stick with what we have.
We'll stick with what we have, well, we we'll we'll stick with what we're saying we're gonna have, so we got, do we need a motion to?
So let's entertain it.
And should we not get people? We don't, we don't get people, we don't get an extra community member or something interested, then we would go with a committee of fourteen.
Oh, we'll get people.
You think so, okay.
Um yeah, I I would take someone to move to uh adjust the screening committee to fifteen as discussed.
So I make motion that we adjust the screening committee from thirteen to fifteen as discussed.
Motion made by what?
Second.
Second by Amy, any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Okay.
And I did announce the teachers and the parent. Oh. Alternate.
What's that?
The most. Just sent out an email forty minutes ago.
So the people have been named, the two unit.
Oh, they have the names?
Oh, good, yeah.
Can we name them?
Yeah. Send your email. No, I mean, I'm happy to read it, but I, yes, 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 I didn't mean. I wasn't.
No, I didn't get it yet, I'm telling you, I gotta go.
Okay, Alexandra Lennon and Erica Manville. The alternates will be if they are not able to serve in the committee, Tracy Carroll or and Nicole Lemon. Unit E is Marie McPhail and the alternate is Samantha Kelly.
Okay.
And when they say alternate.
In case the other person.
If they're like saying, what's the date?
Well, right, but not, but not like, hey, I can't be there on Monday, you can.
Someone has to admit to the whole.
Give me the whole part, right, okay.
So uh with that new knowledge, I would entertain someone to move to name those three people. So inclined.
I move to name those three people. That we're just sharing. But I can, Alexandra Lennon.
Oh, my glasses.
No. I'm just a little disappointed that your phone is still small. Uh I moved to name Alexandra Lennon and Erica Manville, um alternates, uh Tracy.
You don't have to name them.
Okay, and then unit E member is Maureen McPhail.
Motion made by Kerry.
Second.
Second by Amy, any discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed nay, good job, that carries five to zero, I know them. Okay, so we have nine. We wanna talk about school committee or next meeting? At seven oh five.
I think we'll be, I think we'll be more comfortable um presenting the two committee members at the next meeting.
Works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome, making progress, thank you all, great discussion. Okay. How you doing, Helen?
Doing good.
Got a go, you got a homework or anything? We're going along.
I have a big goal.
He's not using A I.
She definitely is, yes.
Not.
Maybe we do the A I. Just kidding.
Meet you, meet you, A I, you do this meeting, that's a solution.
Uh. Okay, we have, going back to seven point one, approval of the M A S C resolutions for the M A S C, M A S S. Delegate meeting on November fourteenth. Um. How many are there?
Did you see increasing the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund?
So in the past, we've tried to um. A synopsis of each one. Anybody feel like?
I think we can just read the therefore.
Yeah, the rationale usually um. Yeah. Kerry's got it, you put your thoughts on it.
Resolution one is uh removing B M I testing from schools. Um. Scrolling down. The it's uh therefore be resolved that M A S C urges the removal of B M I screening requirement from all public schools. And urges the express banning of B M I screening in all public schools.
Yeah. Uh so we'll vote on each one as we go through.
What grade are they doing this?
B M I. Heather, do you know when they do B M I?
I do not know, we're still doing this.
I didn't either.
Well.
We should stop it.
Yeah, I didn't know there's.
Uh all in favor, uh um can somebody move to uh?
Remove B M I testing from.
Uh to recommend or vote in the affirmative resolution.
Can't you say the vote?
Say whatever you want.
Yeah, B M I testing from schools.
Sure. Motion made by, so that's it, second by William, any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 The second is um regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students. Um suggesting therefore be it resolved that Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the great. And general court to join with other states in the passage of so-called sanctuary laws to ensure children and their families have the power of enjoying and safety and tranquility, their natural rights and blessings of life is guaranteed. By the Constitution of the Commonwealth and the rationale is the two thousand eleven passage of the Act relative to gender identity. Uh marked uh Massachusetts commitment to the civil rights of transgender residents. References, additional laws. Um.
That's good. Yeah, okay, um would someone please move to uh vote the affirmative regarding regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students?
Make a motion that we vote in the affirmative regarding sanctuary laws for trans transgender students.
Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, carries five to zero.
Uh their resolution is increasing the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund. Um. Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon Massachusetts Legislature to amend chapter forty, section thirteen E by deleting uh. Quote, two percent of the annual net school spending, end quote, and by inserting the following, quote, five percent of the annual net school spending. Rationale is current prices for special education day programs, Massachusetts can cost a district between fifty thousand and seventy thousand per student. Um, is that sufficient?
Yep.
Okay. I will, I move to increase the maximum balance allowed by, we're voting affirmative to increase the maximum balance allowed by Special Education Reserve Fund.
Motion made by Kerry.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, carries five to zero.
Uh fourth is membership on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Uh Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of. Legislation to repeal the provision of Massachusetts law that prohibits practicing educators. And sitting school committee members from serving on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're calling for the recon, to recon to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education by including members with expertise as licensed educators and members with expertise in public school governance.
Paying job or what?
Yes. No, I don't.
Okay, I'm gonna move that.
Sure. Move to vote on the affirmative of a membership on the Board of Elementary and Secondary.
Since you wanna go on Kerry, you know.
I mean.
Um, motion made by Kerry, second, second by William, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, carries five to zero.
Uh preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. Uh. Massachusetts Association of School Committee calls on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to restore local governance and accountability for Lawrence and Southridge Public Schools no later than July first, recognizing that Hoyoak was removed from receivership on July first. Oh, it probably needs more context, but.
Call Massachusetts. Limit any further state takeovers to a term of no more than three years, that's what it's called.
Yeah, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, yeah, causing the Massachusetts Legislature to limit any future state takeovers.
How long was Hoyoak in receivership? Long, in three years, right?
Much longer.
Yeah.
I agree with this one. Cause. It take a little more than three.[1792.01]
Cause it take a little more than three.
Yeah, right, I wonder why they're pushing for that.
Well, this shows that any change takes at least five.
Someone remove it?
Because it doesn't give enough details, it doesn't, it just says, you know, to remove, um to restore local governance accountability for the Lawrence to Southbridge, um so this, but it doesn't say in here anything about like. What data is driving that, it doesn't give a lot of information about. I I understand that no school wants to be under receiver, no district wants to under receivership, but I'm just looking for one or three years.
Long enough.
You would hope, but.
And I wonder why Arlington was the one came. You're not even on the list.
They said, they put a few of them in here.
I think they're really active. They're really uh.
Was he getting that one person, right?
Well, they're citing that state receivers have failed to meet almost always to, like Fast and Globe data, I mean, they're saying a couple. Things. Partly in that there's no plan, strategy or timeline for restoring.
Yeah.
As the grounds.
Okay. Make a motion. Vote the affirmative.
Is it okay to give, cause you're going to this, right? You're gonna be.
There's a luncheon discussion of these resolutions, and I think either this Friday or next Friday that I signed up for, and then, yes, I'm gonna go to the um.
Would it be okay to give Kerry? Cause I know this is kind of what we did in the past, like give her our blessing to hear all of the details and then make. A decision on behalf of the greater good, you're any song met up? Um, because for certain, like I just don't know if I have quite enough information for one like this to.
We're voting, yeah, so you can move to give the voting delegate the authority to.
I move to give the voting delegate the authority to make the decision. Sure.
In the reclusion.
For the preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools, um as, as she sees fit after hearing all the data.
Okay, good, second by, second by William, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, that carries five to zero.
Next one, personal financial literacy education, reading that right?
Yep.
Um, submit a by the primary of the school committee. Um. Therefore be it resolved that MASC file legislation that would have the effect of ensuring that all students have exposure to personal financial literacy curricula and ultimately graduate from high school with a lifelong. Knowledge of how to be fis- fiscally responsible to avoid being deterred by financial woes, this legislation should ensure that students at various levels would benefit from curriculum in Massachusetts public schools. Would include content in personal financial literacy.
So this adds it to the curriculum, is that, it's a mandate that each school teaches personal finance?
Which we have.
Yeah. Okay. Want to move it?
I make a motion to remove an affirmative for the personal financial literacy education.
Motion made by Williams.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay, that carries five zero.
Establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. Uh Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon Massachusetts Legislature to enact or amend legislation which permits municipalities to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund. To amend MGL part one, title seven, chapter forty, by inserting section thirteen F.
Where Silver, Silver Lake Regional School is.
I can just tell you from, I just thought I would share with you, and the, when my uh Mass Bowl, there's always lots of talk for regional districts, they they struggle with very different things than than we do, the transportation costs and things like that, so um, yeah.
So this would help.
It would, I believe, doesn't do anything for us, but it. Has a real different struggles.
Allocates resources that way.
That, that's correct, yeah.
Seems important that they would be able to do that.
Yeah.
Wait, I make a motion to remove an affirmative to that, did you know school assessment reserve fund?
Second.
Motion made by William, seconded by Kerry, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, carries five to zero. Cool, we did it, nice shot, thank you Kerry. And uh with that, we have to nominate a delegate for the MASC, MASs delegate meeting, you're gonna be there?
Yes.
Is anybody else paying attention? Yeah.
Nothing like I am in this in November.
What a beautiful place.
Buy it.
Uh someone would uh move to nominate Kerry, that'd be the, please, the mo, motion made by William.
Second.
Second by Amy, any other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, congratulations, Kerry.
Thank you for going.
Yeah, thank you for going.
Yeah, like there was.
It's good.
Yeah. And then we didn't have a training in this neck of the woods, I'm also thinking I'd be able to get additional information, yeah.
Did it have a charter of course class during the?
I don't know that they do per se, but there, I feel like I'll pick up on some other pieces that I, until I respond, it comes up, so, yeah.
Like Gordon usually goes, I don't think he's going to.
He's not though.
Yeah. Okay.
Will make me.
You're on your own. Make some breaks, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, finally, we have come to our last piece of business, the Burchland Park Middle School Pathway Exploration Policy.
So you have in front of you a policy and a DESI template, and basically this is a mandate from Massachusetts, from DESI to create this policy. Um which Gordon did um with the guidance of other L L. LVP EC superintendents and career tech, as well as meeting with Burchland counselors and principals. And the good news is, everything except for one thing are things we're already doing, so it's just a matter of writing it into policy. Um, the one thing that we need to formalize is we um are now creating a field trip to C Tech from, for eighth graders. Whereas they were always invited to the open houses, but and to ensure that every kid has the opportunity to go. Um, that will be something that's instituted and paid for um by, you know, he was. Um, so uh DESI requires every district to have a policy in place and this is our policy.
All the students will go on a field trip?
Eighth grade.
It's not um optional, they're all, they're all gonna get on a bus and go?
Um, that's a great question, like if they don't want to go, I think we just have to offer it to.
Okay, we have to offer it to.
So.
Any other questions on the policy? Let's take a minute to.
We have to vote.
Yeah, the policy. Is there a?
The one that, this one, the DESI one?
Top one, is there a policy number on it, uh?
Not with all.
Heather. So just the five, the uh ELPS middle school pathways policy. So let's move to, if that, or approve that, please.
We move to approve the ELPS middle school pathways exploration policy.
Motion made by Kerry.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Uh.
Aye, opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Okay, we made it.
We don't necessarily have to, but just my own knowledge in the last meeting, we referenced that each of us are, have a, are liaisons to the schools. And I do not know which schools, um at, and when Amy said she went to Burchland, it.
I told her to go ahead and stick with her original, um, he, if you want, we could put it on the next agenda as an action item, we'll discuss. Uh, I had.
I know.
I had Mount View.
I had the high school.
And. Appreciate all the. Do you wanna, do you wanna just take Mount Brook, Kerry?
Yeah, so it's just reaching out to the principal and.
Yes.
Sharing with the person and then seeing how she wants me to.
And so um, a lot of times, uh, I'll try and do a visit to the schools as the chair. And usually I try to go with the other school, many members of, who is the rep for that school.
Okay.
So as we get along, we'll coordinate some visits, folks, that's right. Okay, great. Okay. With that, we come to the conclusion of our meeting, Caitlin, thank you for being here and your input.
Thank you.
Jamie, thanks for recording tonight and being here, and I would uh entertain someone to move to adjourn, please.
I'll make a move to adjourn.
Me by Kerry, second by discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, that motion carries five to zero, thank you, we are adjourned.
And you'll let me know if you want.